Members of council, we will just get underway shortly. Good evening, Council Fortini, can we just test your audio, please?
Yes, I'm here, thank you Peter.
Thank you councillor. Good evening, Sue Vanstone, it's Peter Faye from the Clerk's office. I just wish to confirm, oh, I do see Dr Mohammed there right now. Good evening, Dr Mohammed, can we just unmute, can you please unmute your microphone, just so we can test your audio, please?
Good evening, how are you?
Great, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna move to a different area and I'll unmute myself again, give me about one minute, okay?
Okay, you can leave your mic muted while you move, and then when the mayor calls you forward, then you can unmute your mic.
Welcome to our special council meeting of November 11th, 2020. This meeting is called for a specific purpose to provide an update on the latest developments regarding COVID-19 pandemic as it affects the city of Brampton. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this special meeting. We will begin the meeting with the city clerk calling the role for attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, we'll be calling your name, councillor Santos?
Hello, I'm...
Thank you councillor Visante?
Hello, good evening.
Thank you councillor Willans?
Present.
Thank you councillor Pochi?
Present.
Thank you councillor Bowman?
Present.
Thank you councillor Maderos?
Here.
Thank you councillor Williams?
I am here.
Thank you councillor Fortini?
Present.
Thank you councillor Singh?
Here.
Thank you councillor Dillon?
Here.
And Mayor Brown is present, all 11 members are present, Mr Mayor.
We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by councillor Maderos and seconded by councillor Willans to approve the agenda. Instead of seeking a recorded vote for this item, I will ask, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing there's no objections, the motion carries. Meetings of municipal councils are to be open to the public for transparency and accountability, and our meeting will continue to be as well, with a few precautions and limitations. In-person attendance at this meeting is very limited. Members and most staff are participating electronically in this meeting. The public can still access and participate in the meeting in a number of ways. Watching this meeting remotely through the city's live stream, registering with virtual delegate to participate in the meeting, registering to attend the meeting in person to observe the meeting, submitting questions about the agenda business and decisions made by council today, or emailing the city clerk's office at cityclerksoffice@brampton.ca with your question, which may be read into the public meeting record during the 15-minute public question period. Also, continue to follow important service and public health updates at brampton.ca. We've got the latest information from the province of Ontario, the government of Canada, and the city of Brampton. A final reminder from members of council, before we start to consider today's agenda business, please ensure your video is off and microphone is muted until you are assigned the floor, then you can turn on when you speak. This will help ensure only one person is speaking at one time and minimize other background disruptions during the meeting. We are now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Hearing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. This brings us to the business that we have today, and that's an update on COVID-19. I felt that it's prudent, given the spike in numbers in Peel region, that we have an update for members of council and the public on the severity of the situation. A lot's happened since council last met, and that's why we're having this special meeting. And I'm grateful that today we're gonna have an update from Dr Naveen Mohammed, who runs the William Osler Health System, to talk about some of the pressures our hospital is facing, and then from Dr Lowe, our medical officer of health for Peel region. And let me say at the outset that we all knew these would be challenging days. We all knew that a second wave was going to come. And I believe we're at a very critical point in the pandemic in making sure that this doesn't, this doesn't get out of hand, and that we don't want to see a complete lockdown. And so taking some prudent precautions right now will help us manage this. But we also have to have our eyes wide open. And that's why I thought it was important you hear from Dr Lowe and Dr Mohammed. I have the benefit of hearing from them regularly on our regional calls that we have with Mayor Crombie, Mayor Thompson, Chair Yanika. But I think it's really important the public hears their assessment as well, so they understand why some of the measures that are being recommended are important. And also understand why it's a challenging environment in Brampton and Peel region. And I'm gonna add that context in before we hear from the two physicians. Know that we have a disproportionate amount of essential workers. Know that we've got 8,500 people working in the food processing sector, where we've had outbreaks, 11,000 people working in transportation logistics. Frankly, Canada has a debt of gratitude for Brampton because we have so many unsung heroes. Some people have the luxury of working from home. But if you're a healthcare worker, work in a medical laboratory, where we have many in Brampton, if you're working in food processing or transportation logistics, you do not have that luxury. And you go into work knowing that you face an enhanced risk. One of the reasons I pushed so hard for an isolation centre was knowing that there are people who live in crowded housing, people that don't have the financial means to isolate. And so if you have people that are in dangerous settings, where high-risk settings for COVID-19, and they, and they go back to their home without the means to isolate, that's how you get household spread. And so we knew there was gonna be greater pressures on Peel region and Brampton because we are at the nexus of those important sectors of the economy, whether it's food processing or transportation logistics, the disproportionate amount of people working in essential services. Knowing that we face that enhanced risk, I don't think it comes with, with a great surprise that we're facing this challenge. If we were in a remote part of the province or the country and didn't have this abundance of essential workers, it would be a very different picture. If you look at the picture in a Timmins or a Thunder Bay or a Kingston, it is markedly different. But that's not the case in Peel region, and for the first time, we saw case numbers in Peel surpass that of Toronto. That's significant, Toronto has twice the population. So these are challenging days, and I think it's important that the public hears directly from Dr Mohammed and Dr Lowe on the picture that they're seeing. And then, I know members of council are gonna have questions to ask yourselves. The last thing I should mention is, we went into this pandemic with challenges as well. You know, and I commended Dr Naveen Mohammed for the incredible work he does with the resources that he's given. And one of the reasons we're pushing so hard for this phase two of Peel Memorial is because we know we don't have the resources that we require when it comes to healthcare. The provincial average for hospital beds is 2.19, and in Brampton, it is 0.96. And so it speaks to the fact that, you know, this phase two of Peel Memorial should have happened five years ago. Now hopefully it's gonna happen soon, we have the premier's commitment on that. But add that to the context that we don't have the same healthcare reach that some communities do. So not only do we have an overabundance of essential workers and people with precarious employment, we also don't have the same healthcare infrastructure. So it's almost a double challenge that we face. But we're doing our best, the people of Brampton are resilient. We've got an incredible team at Osler, we've got an incredible team at Peel Public Health, and they're up to the challenge. But they need everyone to listen to their advice. Everyone, we want everyone to have their eyes wide open about what the picture is right now. And there are some danger signs on the horizon. You know, we had a Thanksgiving spike in numbers because not enough people took to heart that we can't have Thanksgiving gatherings. We have Diwali coming up, and I'm nervous. And I, I think last year, I probably went to 25 Diwali celebrations. I know what it's like in Brampton, it's a time of joy and celebration. If we have any form of household mixing, we're gonna have a Diwali spike on top of the surging numbers we have right now. That's why it's so precarious, our situation right now. It's why I hope all members of council will support Dr Lowe's recommendations to their constituents and to say to them, we want you to take them to heart. And I know regional council will be ratifying his recommendations tomorrow. So this is a unique opportunity for us to hear directly from the physicians and ask them any questions that they have. So on that note, I'm gonna ask Dr Naveen Mohammed to give his assessment of where we are right now with Brampton Civic and Peel Memorial, and then after that, we'll hear from Dr Lowe. And Dr Naveen, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and update our community. So can I start, Mayor Brown?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay. And as Mayor Brown introduced me, I'm Dr Naveen Mohammed, and I'm the President and CEO of William Osler Health System. And before I start, you know, I truly want to thank Mayor Patrick Brown and the city council, and all of the staff at the city for supporting us, you know, so fully during this time. As well, Dr Lawrence Lowe and the region appeal for being behind us. I know that as we try to take care of each and every patient and take care of our community, there is the obvious issue in the background of the resources in our region. And I'm truly thankful to the mayor and his team for advocating for Osler, our hospitals, and our community and patients on an ongoing basis. So now to the business at hand, as you are aware, over the last week, Osler has faced new challenges in its fight against COVID-19. As the number of cases in the community continue to rise, we have been cor, we have seen a corresponding increase in the number of patients seeking care at our hospitals. Now, this sharp increase has resulted in significant capacity pressures at Brampton Civic. Our primary challenges in, with the rising number of hospitalized patients and suspected COVID-19 cases is the space required to safely isolate and care for these patients. Currently, there are 64 COVID-19 confirmed patients at Osler's two inpatient sites, Brampton Civic and Etobicoke General. And 37 of these patients are at Brampton Civic, and five of those are receiving care in the intensive care unit at Brampton Civic. We also have 15 suspect or suspected cases at Brampton Civic in addition to age COVID-19, what we call contact patients. That means that these are people that had COVID-19 at one point, but are recovering. Patients who are infected with COVID-19 and those who we suspect of having COVID-19 while we wait for their tests require a dedicated, single occupancy room to ensure the safety of other patients. And this impacts our ability to make the full use of our inpatient areas. So we're not as efficient as before because we can only put one patient per room, even if that room has two or three or four beds. Now, with a total of 87 COVID-19 positive and suspect cases in the hospital, this means that 87 rooms must now be occupied by a single patient because of the need for isolation and to protect the safety of other patients. Now, this impacts our ability to move patients from our emergency department to an inpatient bed, and it also reduces our overall ability to care for people in the community who need our services. Now, this is further compounded by the fact that we're in an ongoing flu season, and we're also managing a couple of outbreaks within our hospital on specific floors. At the same time, we're also seeing an increase in volume in our emergency departments for the non-COVID-related illnesses, whether it's injuries, or, you know, abdominal pains, or kidney stones, or headaches, or heart disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, those sort of patients that are still coming into our ERs. Yesterday, we noticed that the ambulance volumes were up at both sites, something that we have not seen in quite a while. Last week, to ensure that our patients continue to receive safe, high-quality care, and as an interim measure, we made a proactive decision to partner with other hospitals in the Greater Toronto Area and beyond to care for some Osler patients. So on Friday, we began transferring some patients from Brampton Civic and Etobicoke General to other hospitals. These transfers are helping to ensure that we have the necessary capacity to provide care for patients in our emergency departments and admit new patients to our units. As always, our top priority is to deliver safe, high-quality care to all patients. And this interim measure was necessary to ensure that we continue to do that. So, to date, or up to about 5:00 PM today, 25 patients have been transferred to other GTA hospitals, and we expect that these type of transfers may continue over the coming days. We're working with the Ministry of Health and Ontario Health and our partner hospitals, as well as with patients and families to ensure that the transfers are safe and are, and provide a seamless continuation of care. We're really grateful to our hospital colleagues who've stepped up to support us and to provide care to Osler patients. We've also had to postpone some non-urgent surgeries to ensure that we continue to maintain sufficient capacity. Patients whose surgeries are being postponed are being notified directly, and we will reschedule these as soon as possible. Rest assured, surgeries that are urgent or time-sensitive, such as surgeries for cancerous-type issues, they continue to happen. We want our community to know that our hospitals, including our emergency departments, remain open. Our teams are working tirelessly to ensure that we can continue to provide care to those who need it. If you require emergency care, please call 911 or come to your nearest emergency department. We will take care of you. Now, there are two main weapons used to fight COVID-19, and these are testing and public health measures. An effective combination of these two will help reduce the spread of the virus in our community in Brampton. At Osler, we have now tested more than 260,000 community members for COVID-19, and we continue to work with our health system partners in the region to increase neighborhood testing within the community. The public health restrictions that have been issued by the region of Peel and Dr Lowe's team are critical to helping slow the spread of the virus. They will help to ensure our community hospital has the capacity to care for the people that need it. We're very pleased to support the work of Dr Lowe and his team, and ask everyone to adhere to these measures. They are a powerful weapon in helping us fight this virus and in keeping ourselves and our loved ones and the community safe. I wanna thank you for listening in to me this evening, and I want to thank the city of Brampton, the city council, and Mayor Brown for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
And then I thought we would hear from Dr Lowe and then have questions after both physicians have given their updates, because I think they could interchangeably answer questions. Next up is Dr Lowe. Dr Lowe, are you available to speak now?
And, hello, yes, thank you Mayor Brown, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And thank you to yourself and Brampton council, regional council, Dr Mohammed and William Osler Health System, and the entire community of Brampton for all the support, and to all, every resident of the region appeal for support during this very challenging time. I wanna make very clear to city council tonight that we are at a critical juncture in the pandemic here in the region appeal. And I want to also state at the front that I am generally a supporter of what is called a tailored approach to ensuring that we make sure we get this under control. It's very clear that, in general, we recognize that there are potential health issues and harms in terms of restrictions, if you go too hard on the restrictions. But it's also very clear that there are many health hazards and harms if COVID is allowed to spin out of control. So insofar as we talked about a dimmer switch back at regional council, the reality is, and this is back in the spring, the reality is that as the number of cases, as the risk in the community increases, there need to be some sort of measures brought under, brought in to help it bring the balance back to someplace where things are manageable. In general, the pathway in our community, as with every other community in the world that is fighting this disease, is as follows. Transmission occurs in the community. Cases eventually either resolve or require hospitalization. And subsequently, some of the cases that require hospitalization require additional intensive care. And of those, some will further succumb. And with the disease for which there is no innate immunity, that is spread from person to person, the reality is that mixing and interaction is what drives this, and that if you have too much mixing and too many interactions, it then becomes a numbers game. You then start to see more and more cases, and the more cases you have, that translates into more hospitalizations, more intensive care stays, and also more passings. So that's essentially what we're up against. And that's what we've been up against ever since this disease first landed on our shores in January 25th in Toronto, on March 5th, in the region appeal. That was what we were up against in the first wave, where we first took our initial closures and curtailments on a broad set to try to bring the disease under control, to try to understand more about it, build up capacity both within our hospital and our test and trace system, and also to educate the public around preventive measures and the importance of limiting interactions. Where we are right now in the region appeal, across all three municipalities, is seeing an increasing trend of cases. We are also seeing a very clearly defined second wave that began in the middle of October, following a Thanksgiving surge, and is now continuing, boosted again this week by what appears to be a Halloween surge. And so we're now seeing a situation where the continued interactions and the story that was essentially written 10 to 14 days ago is essentially bearing out in terms of case numbers at this time. This has me particularly concerned because there's not much that we can do about the interactions that have happened 10 to 14 days ago. And it's very clear that this is likely to get worse before it gets better. But what we need to do, recognizing that these are the signals that we are now seeing, is that the balance between measures and the impacts of measures and the potential impacts of COVID is now shifting squarely to the COVID side. Because beyond the cases, the other thing that we need to also remember is that we need to have adequate ability to trace and isolate, to keep the pandemic under control in our community. And we need to have adequate capacity to treat in the event that someone does fall ill. And it is a capacity that is limited not only to COVID, but as Dr Mohammed identified, also for every other medical condition that may require emergency, urgent, or essential care at our hospitals. And so our situation is now not only the significant case rises and the increase in test incidence rate that many people have tried to point to and try to understand the data around, but it's increasingly, increasingly looking at both our tracing capacity and our hospital capacity as well. And on those fronts, both are increasingly, both are being increasingly challenged. At this point in time, Peel Public Health is still continuing to contact trace. We've managed to continue contact tracing through significant surges in September and in October, and following the recent Thanksgiving surge, have started to see significant challenges. The reality is that we did ramp up over the summer. We instituted a new provincial management system for case and contact management. We hired a whole bunch of staff, and even still, having planned for the levels that we had planned for, had not anticipated that we would eventually end up at the levels that we are seeing now. Since mid-October, we have been receiving assistance from approximately 11 health units elsewhere in the province, in the north and in the east, in order to make sure that we are trying to stay afloat. And I can say tonight as well that with the recent surge in cases, our ability to continue to contact trace and manage cases and assess exposures in the way that we have been doing throughout September, October, which kept us to a steady burn, is now slowly slipping away from us. So this means that our contact tracing capacity and our ability to understand where this virus is moving in our community is increasingly fraught. We're also seeing, though, for the cases that we are tracing, that it's no longer happening just in known cases, known clusters and chains of transmission, as I've previously said. We are now seeing widespread community transmission. We are seeing many more unknown sources. We are seeing many more cases that are, you know, basically showing up and not necessarily understanding how or where they may have been exposed, which really starts to challenge the overall picture and really speaks to the need for everyone to take precautions at this time. And finally, you heard a bit about the hospital capacity challenges here, but I would submit to council that if you have a situation where cases are starting to spiral out of control, contact tracing capacity is nearly overwhelmed, and hospital capacity is becoming increasingly challenged. That is a signal that something must be done. For the longest time, our data has been very clear, and Mayor Brown outlined this in the beginning of his statement, that we are seeing transmission in a triad, in workplaces, in homes, and in social gatherings between them. I'm grateful that the federal government has, has accepted our application to fund a voluntary isolation center here in Peel, and we are working as quickly as we can to bring that online with a recognition that household transmission amongst large families remains one of our biggest drivers of cases, which then also go out to the community. These are not houses, we are, we are not a community with houses and people that live either on their own or in a couple, as you might see on the waterfront in Toronto or in downtown Toronto. We have large families, sometimes multiple families under the same house. Sometimes you have many people who might be experiencing poverty or low income, who are also sharing housing stock as well, which presents challenges for our control because these people cannot self, safely self-isolate. In terms of workplaces, we have continued to work very closely with our Ministry of Labor partners in issuing workplace blitzes. We've referred all manner of high-risk workplaces to them. Thankfully, our contact tracing over the past few months has identified what those high-risk workplaces are. And as Mayor Brown mentioned in his opening remarks, it is the essential workers, very much the essential workers in the city of Brampton, who don't have the luxury of working from home, who are trying to make rent and are deciding between getting tested and needing to isolate and not work, or to basically show up at work and actually expose people when they may have COVID. And so it's for this reason that we are continuing to work very closely with our Ministry of Labor partners to ensure that precautions are taken at work to limit spread in those settings, to make sure that additional public-facing businesses are the subject of inspection as well, to ensure that the community and staff are protected, and there was a recent blitz that was just completed over the past weekend. And why I have also been, come on record in my recommendations to the Chief Medical Officer of Health as saying that there needs to be some... as saying that there needs to be some sort of support and worker protection for paid sick days, so that the incentive for people is to stay home and do the right thing when they are sick, rather than to show up at work or to break isolation early. And that leaves the final major driver of transmission in our community. And I want to be very clear that in moving us from modified stage two into a red zone of its framework, the province's framework then permitted restaurants and gyms to open. And it's not that these settings inherently were already a problem. And certainly at the levels that we have and the data we had in September, they were operating just fine with precautions. But at the levels we have now, and the fact that you cannot consistently distance or mask in those settings, they're essentially like adding another log to the fire. Which is why I put forward my letter of instruction last weekend to counterbalance what I was worried about in terms of a reopening of those whole economic sectors. Recognizing that there is important need for people to be able to work, recognizing that there are also impacts due to closures, I said, let's target the other stuff that we're seeing. And so in the letter of instruction, we have basically identified two things. We've asked people, in the strongest terms possible, to limit their close contact at this time to people in their immediate household and one or two essential supports. One of the safest ways that we can get through this pandemic together, at least just for the next two to four weeks to try to figure things out and bring this under control, is to limit the number of close contact interactions we have and limit the number of in-person interactions that we have. So this advice was designed to ensure and encourage everyone to stick to their household bubble where they're probably already living day-to-day, eating, sleeping, spending time together in close contact, to limit any potential exposure to that household. Beyond the household, we recognize that there is a certain amount of in-person interaction that everyone must engage in, whether it is work, school, accessing healthcare, purchasing necessities such as food and drink, gasoline, automobile maintenance, banking, et cetera. And also, and also in exercise and fitness for the purposes of, you know, either solo exercise or with someone in your immediate household. We recognize that those have to happen in person. And so our request is simply, in those instances, go ahead and meet, keep numbers low. If it's with someone outside of your immediate household, make sure you're sticking to the precautions of distancing, masking, and not showing up if you're sick. So it's really close contact in your household, and then essential precautions contact outside your home. That is the key message. Everything else in the letter of instruction targets some of the bigger drivers that we were seeing in our community. We know that wedding receptions have been a significant driver. We've completed dozens of wedding investigations, dozens of outbreaks, where COVID changed someone's wedding story rather than moved someone's wedding story. And there is a lot of pressure to attend not only weddings, but also other lifetime gatherings, lifetime celebrations such as birthdays, social gatherings, et cetera. It becomes a perfect storm because you're with people you trust. You decide that the precautions don't matter. Someone has COVID, and suddenly 25, 30, 40 people are exposed. So that is why we made that recommendation in view of the rising case count and a recognition that these social gatherings continue to drive cases in our community. Recognizing as well that faith and religious observance is a very important part of life for everyone in our community. It was very difficult for me to make the recommendation that we saw, but the data and evidence was also clear. And this is a recommendation, not an instruction. It's not binding. But at this time, we are asking all places of worship to consider, to strongly consider, returning to virtual services, even if it's just for the next two to four weeks. And if not, to try to limit the number of people that are in the facility. The provincial guidance provides for 30%. We're asking to consider 30% up to an upper limit of 50. Again, 50 helps to surprescribe the number of people who may be in close contact, who may be there. Although, again, like I said, it needs to be precautions with anyone outside your household. But we have had dozens of outbreaks that have been linked to places of worship. We have had many instances where a case investigation, over 50 case investigations in the month of October, have indicated that someone either attended a place of worship during their period of communicability and exposed people, or may have acquired it from a place of worship. So it's not that we were singling these out by virtue of a random choice, but it was speaking to the data and evidence that we were seeing. And finally, in respect to banquet halls and event venues, we ask that these be closed through a chair's order, with a recognition that the sole purpose of these venues is to ensure that large groups of people can come together, which is completely incompatible with trying to control a pandemic that spreads from person to person. There were some additional measures that were put in the letter of instruction around cohorting for gyms and encouraging people to sit with their own immediate households if they went dining. But all of these really boiled down to two things. First of all, targeting some of the biggest, largest drivers in the social category in our community and trying to, in a bid to get this under control. And secondly, in sending the strong message that at this point in time, we really need to limit our close contact with our immediate household and limit our activities outside the household in person to the most essential with precautions, and postpone, modify, or cancel everything else, whether it's a big celebration this weekend, whether it's a wedding, what have you. We just need to focus on minimizing our interactions to the most essential to get this under control. The disease is spread from person to person, and it cannot spread if people are not meeting in close, prolonged contact, or even in contact at all. So that was essentially the basis for the letter of instruction that I put forward. The situation that we have at this point in time is that if we get this right, hopefully in two weeks, we will flatten out at the level that we are at right now. If the whole community can come together and make sure that they are doing their part to limit their interactions, we will reduce the transmission, reduce the reproductive number, reduce the number of cases. We can't change what's been and gone. We know that that is going to show up possibly in more hospitalizations. But the goal is to make sure that this is just a short wave that laps over our hospital, and we bring it back to something manageable, ideally for the region, targeting something like 50 to 100 cases tops, ideally closer to the 50 side. And that is essentially why we're putting things in here, because the reality is, once this gets further afield, we have the experience of Western Europe to look at. We have the experience of El Paso, Texas to look at. This is the world's biggest open-book test. And we know that, just like compound interest, it starts out slowly, but eventually starts to grow very quickly once it gets to a certain threshold. We are at that threshold. And if we do not, if it's under control now, my concern is then the things that we really want to keep open, including things like schools and things like long-term care homes that we want to continue to protect, those will be increasingly challenged by significant rates of community transmission. So that's where we're at, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm sorry that my update was perhaps a little more dour and longer than I'm used to providing, but at this point in time, I'm happy to take any questions with Dr. Mohammed.
Your dedication to public health in Brampton and our broader region. I've got a number of questions here, and feel free to answer them whoever is most appropriate to answer. First question is from Counselor Paul Vicente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to express my gratitude for Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed for the leading role that you're playing in informing the people here of the city of Brampton and the Region Appeal. Your science-based approach and your duty of care are exemplified in all of your words and your activity and your leadership through delivering health here in Brampton. Question for Dr. Mohammed. You mentioned that you're experiencing a challenge in terms of shortage of rooms for single occupants. I was wondering, because when we've seen some of the historical evidence or record from other outbreaks, for example, the Spanish flu in 1917, you often see a lot of photographs that show wards of the sick sharing one particular room, given that they were all suffering from this same virus, and therefore, would they not be able to be in the same room? And I'm just wondering if that is something that we are doing as well, where we know that someone has COVID-19? Are they able to share a room in that case?
Yeah, I think, you know, just like in the emergency department, we have a triage system when it comes to issues like this. And it all depends on at what stage of the pandemic we are at. What we're trying to do right now is not to put multiple COVID patients in one room for a number of reasons. One, when there's one person in one room and the nurse is going in and putting on her PPE, because each time a nurse or a physician goes into a room, they have to go through a certain sequence on how to put on their PPE and how to take off their PPE. When you have multiple patients in the room and the nurse is doing multiple things, and there's always, or the physician or whoever is going, the caregiver going in the room, there's always a risk of a breach at that time. At this point, we're trying to keep one person per room. Now, you know, today we have 60-something COVID cases. If next week we have 128, and the week after we have, you know, 200, then we're going to have to think about going to those extreme measures where not only are we picking and choosing who stays in the hospital, who goes home, but how we put people in rooms. I can tell you that when the pandemic first came on in March, we were planning things like hockey arenas, possibly the International Centre at Airport Road in Derry to be housed, to create warehouses where patients will stay. So you're right, that's what happened at the Spanish flu, and I hope we don't have to go there, but that is an option at one point. We just don't want to do that right now for the safety of our staff and for the safety of anybody else that comes in for the care of these patients. The other thing I'll tell you is that most of the people that end up in the hospital with COVID usually have other concomitant illnesses. They may have other infections as well. One of the common ones is MRSA, which is a methicillin-resistant staph aureus-type infection, or some other type of infection. So we really have to be careful that we don't mix other types of infections with people that may not be infected with that. So I'm trying to simplify it as much as I can, and not being an infectious disease physician, I can tell you that it's a bit more complicated. But, you know, God forbid, if the pandemic gets really, really worse and Dr. Lawrence Lowe's financial analogy of a compounding interest rate comes true, then yeah, we'll be putting them in boardrooms and arenas and warehouses. I just pray that we don't have to go there.
Thank you. Agreed. Thank you, Dr. Mohammed. And I just want to make a quick comment of thanks to Mayor Brown for your leadership in communicating with the residents of the city.
I think we might have lost Counselor Vicente there. Counselor Vicente?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'd like to express my thanks, Mayor, for the great job. Thank you. Just want to express my gratitude to the mayor for the great job of communicating to the residents of this city. I don't think there is a single person in the city of Brampton who doesn't understand the important role that they each play, the protections and the measures that they need to follow to protect themselves and every other person. And that is in part due to the job that you're doing and communicating every week, whether it's through interviews or through media or through the town halls, which are so very well-attended. Just want to thank you for that work, and I hope that folks continue to listen and continue to follow as closely as possible those directions, Dr. Lowe's core four pieces of advice, and together we'll get through this, I am sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vicente. The next question is Counselor Pulashy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Dr. Lowe. Thanks, Dr. Mohammed. Just a few questions, and I'll ask them if whoever wants to grab them. I think this one is for Dr. Lowe. Dr. Lowe, we've talked about school cases and the cases by class, transmission and opposed to outbreak. There seems to be a lot of non, a lot of misnomers out there, people bouncing back and forth to what they actual believe. Can you tell us exactly if, has there been any cases in Peel that a student transmitted to another student within their classroom?
So thank you for the question, Counselor Pulashy, and through you, Mr. Mayor. There are instances of transmission within schools, students to teachers, teachers to students, but I want to be very clear that those are rare. Those have been extremely rare. Of all the cases that we see in our schools, many of them do not transmit onwards within the school setting. And I think a lot of that really speaks to the precautions that have been put into place within schools. And I think it's also really important for me to highlight that, first of all, as our case counts continue to rise in the community, we are going to see more cases in schools just by virtue of those pieces, which makes precautions that much more important. But I think the second thing is, to the extent that we can try to keep schools open for as long as we can, we know that the benefits of children being in school for socialization, for their education, for their learning and development is really vital. And so that really speaks to two things. First of all, keeping them in school with precautions as long as we can. And second of all, if we can get the cases down, that gives us a better shot that they'll be in-person in school as opposed to heading back online.
For sure. And thanks, Dr. Lowe, for that. There may be parents that disagree with you relating to their children. They may feel their children does better online. It is a lot different than in the beginning when the teachers were just sending out assignments. It's a lot more interactive now, but I completely understand. I support, I have three children at three different schools. So I support them going and still being able to interact with their classmates. I think that's very important for my children. For my children specifically, them being at three different schools. So I am getting emails about cases at their schools. It's been a few times for each school. We talked, I think it was either last regional meeting or the regional meeting before that, you had talked about outbreaks in schools, and I needed a little bit more clarity on that. If there is, is an outbreak considered when a student transmits to another student or multiple students outside of their cohort, outside of their classroom? Or can an outbreak be internal in that classroom?
So thank you, Counselor Pulashy, for the question. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Any sort of instance of transmission where the school would be the primary setting would be cause for outbreaks. So whether it's within a cohort or between cohorts, or in multiple instances of transmission within the same school, which would warrant a whole school closure, there's different levels of outbreaks. But in general, what we define as an overall school outbreak would be something that's beyond a cohort as opposed to just within the cohort. But just to be very clear, in all of our investigations, we're always, it's always cohorts and then the broader school. So anything beyond a cohort ultimately becomes declared a school outbreak.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for that. As for the recent announcement on these new 15-minute testing kits, some 7 million have been purchased. I know it's very early. I'm not sure, Dr. Lowe or Dr. Mohammed, who can answer this? I guess they're coming, the first order is coming in a couple of weeks. Do we know how many we're getting for the Region Appeal? And do we know how many William Olser will be getting? And, and then diving into it a little bit deeper, how many Brampton will be getting?
So thank you for the question councillor Pulashy through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll answer the first part around the kits themselves and what they're going to be used for. And then perhaps Dr. Mohammed can weigh in if, if they're receiving any at the hospital. My understanding is that the, the criteria for the kits in which they're going to be used are in three main instances. They're going to be used in rural and remote settings, which obviously doesn't, we don't qualify here in the city of Brampton or in the region appeal. But they are also going to be used, I believe, in outbreak scenarios where it's really important to get at least some sort of presumptive result so that you can initiate case and contact tracing and outbreak management quickly while you wait for a confirmatory test. And I think in the third instance, they're looking at trying to use it on, I believe in certain high-risk populations or settings, although I have to confirm that one because I think that criteria was vigorously debated back and forth. So I, I understand that there will be allocations provided to health units, particularly in high transmission areas. I'm still waiting for further information as to what we'll be getting at Peel Public Health. But at this time, you know, at, at least the criteria and the way it'll be deployed would be, for example, in a school outbreak or a long-term care outbreak where we need to quickly confirm, at least on a presumptive positive, what has happened and to put measures in place quickly. I don't know if Dr. Mohammed, if you folks are receiving any of the, of the new rapid antigen test kits or the, the point-of-care kits.
Ontario Health is, is selecting some hospitals to run some pilots on, on the kits to look at the, the specificity, the sensitivity and, and the process of actually doing the test. They did reach out to us. We opted not to be one of the pilot sites because we are currently so engulfed in, you know, the, the work that we're doing. But as soon as those pilots are complete, and I don't think it'll take that long, and if the pilots are successful, we will be getting a number of those kits. And once I know the numbers, I'll be happy to let you guys know.
So, Dr. Mohammed, we opted out of, of the pilot? And was that because at our end, we needed to be able to provide the staff to, to do the work on, on the pilot? Was there funding or was there opportunity during the pilot to, to have additional staff?
What we found was that the process to run the pilot took more resources than we could afford. When I say resources, I don't mean financial, I mean human resources and our lab resources. And we opted to focus on continue to provide a large amount of testing, not only at each one of our hospital sites, but also through our, through our assessment centers. If you remember when we first, when the pandemic first started, we were allowed to do about eighty actual COVID tests at Oslar. That number went up to about a hundred and fifty in the subsequent number of weeks. And then we asked Ontario Health to allow us to buy our own processors to do the PCR test. And those processors were, came into Oslar in early October. And it took some time to calibrate them and to get them working in our labs so that we can now do up to eight hundred of our COVID tests onsite and have turnaround times much quicker than if we were sending the results downtown. But because we were starting those, those new tests at Oslar at the same time that a pilot was requested, we opted to focus on the quicker turnaround time of the PCR, the proven PCR test that's already happening as opposed to getting caught up into another pilot. In the end, once the pilot is done, the, the, the actual antigen testing will be available to all Ontario hospitals and we'll be happy to jump on at that point and take it. We just didn't want to jump in, in a testing phase right now.
Sure. Okay. And unfortunately, all the stars didn't align on that one. So, okay. Thank you, Dr. Mohammed. Just on the advocacy piece of, of those testing kits then, Dr. Lowe, is it more so, are we being able to provide comments to try and get some of the testing kits? Or, or have the testing kits available for those sectors where we feel are the, are the highest impact in terms of the job and then bringing them, bringing the, the virus home to the spread of the household? Are we able to provide any comments to that as, as we're the highest per capita currently? Because of those jobs?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Pulashy. I, I, so the only reason I have an idea of the criteria is that I was part of a provincial task force that looked at potential uses for the, for the testing. It's not clear to me whether additional consultation is going to be undertaken or whether they're just going to start pulling these out, but I can commit, I can undertake to commit to speaking with our Ontario Health partners, who as you know, are the provincial agency that oversee testing, to learn more about how additional inputs may be provided into the deployment of these tests and also an update as to when and where we might expect these tests to be, to, to arrive in the region appeal.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lowe. My last question, just in relation to what we know now that we didn't know then and where we potentially could be, to the effect that, you know, our, our, the great big country down to the south of us, until they, until they kind of get their, get a little bit more serious on, in terms of, of how they're going to, to handle, handle COVID. For us, there is not much, I believe, that we can do. If we, if we think that we should go back to, to phase one, well, we haven't learned much from history, may drive the numbers down a little bit, but essentially we're not going to, to be able to get past this until the US actually does something or we stop any, any types of the transmissions that we're getting from outside, outside the borders. Is it, is it fair to say that, that, you know, we're going to do the best thing we can do until the vaccine comes? And the vaccine is essentially going to be the savior of all?
So through the mayor to councillor Pulashy, and I imagine Dr. Mohammed may want to weigh in on the, on the use of the vaccine as well. To the extent that the vaccine is going to, going to be the, be the intervention that will allow us to really start to target, first of all, protect vulnerable populations and high-risk populations. And then secondly, to assist with in, interrupting transmission and what, what was traditionally known, especially with the eradication of smallpox, was something called ring vaccination, where if someone had, so similar to contact tracing. If someone had the diagnosis of smallpox, they would vaccinate all their close contacts. And so as the vaccine comes out, we know there's not going to be enough supply right away. It'll probably go to the high-risk folks first to protect them. And then it will become a tool, together with our case and contact management, to try to interrupt transmission in the way that I've just described with ring vaccination. I think it's really incumbent upon us though here in Canada to continue this balance that I said, you know, it's, so certainly it's, you know, when COVID-19 starts to spin out of control, where it overwhelms contact tracing, where, you know, it's a risk of overwhelming the healthcare system, irrespective of what's happening in the United States, there is still a risk that we will see a picture like Wuhan or New York or El Paso, most recently, here, if we don't take the measures seriously. So I, I'm very hopeful that the community will take the instructions and recommendations that I've had to really limit their close contact to their households and only engage in essential in-person activities with precautions outside of it. You know, that's going to make a difference in terms of trying to turn things around and will hopefully obviate the need for stricter measures as contemplated under the province's framework. But I'm also under no illusions that if we, similar to Western Europe, start to get to the level where we're seeing five thousand, six thousand, ten thousand cases a day in the province of Ontario and the bulk of them in Peel, a significant bulk of them in Peel, that's going to have impacts on our healthcare system and that's going to have impacts on our hospitals. And then you'll be dealing with a COVID surge on top of the hospital surge. So I'd say the vaccine is one part of things, but we really need to keep up our precautions and play this careful balance between, if COVID comes, we try to push it back in the bottle and, and put the lid back on a bit so that we can open up on this side. And then as COVID, as we get things under control again, you can start to open up a bit more. And then when you start to see COVID go up again, then you start to put just a few more restrictions. It's about, it's about trying to find that balance of targeted restrictions, targeted approaches to drivers of transmission to push COVID back in, to reopen. And then as you reopen, if you reopen too much, to start putting back in those adaptations again.
Yeah, I, I love using the terminology balance, Dr. Lowe, as you know. As you know, Dr. Lowe, or you may not know, in February, I said that this was going to be bad. In July, I said the second wave was going to be worse. And I don't, and I believe strongly now that if we don't start doing something in terms of, and it can't just be Peel. If Peel gets shut down, everybody's just going to go out to Halton, out to York, up north or, or down into Toronto or wherever they can do. So, uh, thank you both for, for being here again and, and providing. And thank you for also chiming in on the town halls too. It's much appreciated with the amount of people that are on those, listening to, to what you two have to say. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
This is councillor Charmaine Williams.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Dr. Mohammed, Dr. Lowe, thank you so much for all that you're doing. You know, this has been challenging. And who knew we'd be going through a pandemic in our lifetime? You know, I, I have a couple of questions. And I think with the way the pandemic was handled in March and April, I have to ask, are we worse off now than we were back in March and April when we were on full lockdown? And nobody left their homes and so on?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, and certainly Dr. Mohammed can also speak to the healthcare side of it as, as it pertains to the spring, to councillor Williams. The initial lockdown was a blunt instrument because we knew very little about the disease. And we were essentially trying to accomplish a few things. We needed to buy time to learn about it, how it spreads, how to treat it. We needed time to bring it under control because it was already spinning out of control in our community. We needed time to build up capacity, both within our healthcare system and our contact tracing system in public health to make sure that we can continue to respond. And then ultimately, we needed time to really bring things under control. But ultimately, we do recognize that the lockdown also had significant impacts on health, mental health, wellbeing, economic impacts, all those other pieces. And I want to make very clear that the letter of instruction that I have provided is designed to try to make sure that it doesn't get to the point where we need to do that again. I think over the summer, we built up quite a bit of capacity. And that was why we were able to cope with a bit of a larger case surge. We were at, you know, sixty to a hundred, twenty a day, and then we were up to two hundred a day through most of October. And we were, we were keeping it flat. We were keeping that, you know, with each level, there was a bit of a jump, but we were kind of holding it out until the Thanksgiving surge came in. And basically now you're seeing our second wave that's basically arrived. But the whole idea of the summer was to build up that tracing capacity where previously in March and April, we had to use a blunt lockdown because we, we could, we couldn't trace at those levels. So obviously we built up to being able to trace to about, you know, sixty to a hundred, a hundred and thirty was already stretching it, obviously. But, you know, once you're getting to the levels that we're having now, four hundred and sixty-six cases a day in Peel region, like it's well beyond our capacity to trace at this point in time. And we just need to recognize that other measures need to come into place to reduce interactions and reduce spread.
Thank you. So I, I, I think we're all, we all have our eyes on other parts of the world and how they're dealing with their surges and their second waves. And we've seen other countries do full lockdowns with, with curfews and really serious and strong, you know, plans to just try and get things back onto control. We are seeing surges right now. And I think a lot of people are quite concerned with the numbers that we're seeing. And so I wonder why, you know, even though we have more capacity now and we have a better understanding of how the, you know, the, how this virus moves and such, compared to other, other countries and how they're dealing with it, why in Brampton or in Peel, aren't we taking more of a, of a, that blunt approach just to try and get things back under control and drive home the message of how serious this virus is if we continue to spread? Like we as people continue to spread because we're the only ones that are spreading this virus.
It's a really great question. And so through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Williams. The reason why is because we, we're trying to thread a very careful needle. Because again, if you go back to the idea of balance, certainly if COVID-19 spreads completely out of control, there's fear in the community, there's a lot of people dead and dying. And there's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of impacts to health, both short-term and long-term on mental health as well. And so that's one extreme that we don't want to get to. And that's, that's the extreme that has been seen, like I mentioned, in places like El Paso or Wuhan or New York and all those other places that have seen misfortune and calamity. But at the same time, on the other side, we do know that if you do go too hard on the lockdown side, that also impacts all sorts of things in terms of health and, you know, access to healthcare, mental health and wellbeing, economic endeavors, which can also impact people. So it, it impact people, impact their health and wellbeing. So our perspective at this, my perspective at this point of time, if I may, councillor Williams, is to say, this is our last-ditch effort. And the letter of instructions that I have put in place are designed to say, if we can manage to reduce our interactions this week and next week, trying to make sure that it's okay, and we hopefully see these numbers flatten out at five hundred, then I think by early to mid next week, I'll say, you know what? We're good. It's working. If however, next week we see another doubling, where we're going from four hundred and sixty-six cases a day to a thousand cases a day, and knowing that eventually twenty percent of those two hundred might need hospitalization, that's where I think we need to start having a much more serious conversation about, you know, the compound interest piece. And I have a friend, a very good friend of mine, who's a, a Dutch physician. And he explains it this way. He says, you look, you're like, you're good. You're sitting at five hundred, a thousand, and then suddenly it's four thousand and you're far behind and it's just out of control. He's like, so we're at that precipice right now councillor Williams. I think your piece identified and essentially the instructions and recommendations that I have put forward are a last-ditch effort for us to lower our interactions, limit our impact, interactions to our close contacts and households and only essential interactions out of the homes with precautions to try to make sure that we can keep this where it is. And if we cannot do that, then unfortunately, there is that, there is that gray part of the provincial framework that does provide for that and it would ultimately be a provincial decision.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe, for explaining that. I think it's very important that we do need to really take heed for the messages and the, and the steps that we need to take right now. I am however concerned though, because we had a beautiful weekend. And I know many of us were outside. And if we are concerned with a doubling in the next week or two, with how, you know, human behavior reacts to warm weather. And I think it's a good indication, and I don't want to, I don't want to speculate because, you know, I'm not a scientist or anything. But I'm concerned that, you know, in the next week or two, we could see that doubling because it was so beautiful. I think weather dictates human behavior quite significantly in Brampton. So I, I really, I think it would be helpful to, for us to have clarity. Because I, the, if, if we're worried about what's going to come, there almost might be a guarantee. You know what I mean? Do you have any comments on that?
So through the mayor to councillor Williams, maybe what I will do is I will ask Dr. Mohammed to speak to the situation at the hospital because I do know they have a surge capacity plan. So I absolutely, let, let me, let me just state at the very outset, I share your concerns councillor Williams, which is why in the interest of trying to make sure that, that people take the, the recommendations and the instructions clearly, cease all large social activities, everything that's there. This is our last-ditch attempt. My understanding is there is a bit of an emergency break in terms of a surge capacity plan at the hospital. The idea is to make sure that if the cases double next week, we can take that, take the, take the broader measure of starting the conversation with the province around what we're seeing, both here as well as in neighboring jurisdictions. But, but at this point, I think we have a little bit more. And I, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Mohammed. But even where you folks are at, there may be additional emergency plans that you might put into place, maybe considered.
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. And thank you for your question. I, I completely agree with Dr. Lowe. Even though, you know, we may be in a bit of a worse capacity situation right now than we were in April or May, we know a lot more about the we were in April or May, we know a lot more about the disease, and our staff, who we spent a lot of time coaching at that time, are much more confident and comfortable in not only treating these patients, but in processing these patients. We're not getting any more questions about, you know, is it airborne, does this mask help, do goggles help, does gloves, do gloves help? And there was a lot of uncertainty at that point. So, we're further away, we're further along from that point of view. We're also further along in predicting, as Lawrence said, that, you know, of all the patients that get COVID, about twenty percent of them will, you know, end up in the hospital, and out of that twenty percent, another twenty percent will end up in the ICU. And we know now very early on in a person's hospital state, if they're going to be intubated, if they're going to need the lung bypass machine, if, all those things, we're better off from that point of view. In terms of our capacity, here's what happened in April. We went from full activity to nothing. No outpatient CTs, no outpatient MRIs, no surgeries of any kind, nothing. All you're doing is doing your emergency departments, you're testing, and you're looking after patients in the hospital. What we've learned from that, you know, canceling surgeries led to an influx of patients in the last couple of months who were much further along in their cancer diagnosis. Instead of diagnosing people at stage one and two, we were diagnosing them at stage three or four, which is catastrophic. We also learned that, you know, the surgeries that we're doing that don't need to stay in the hospital, day surgeries, you can continue those surgeries because they're not taking up beds. You can also continue to keep staff in their normal duties who don't know how to look after inpatients. So, we're not using blunt instruments right now, we're using much more finer targeted measures. And I'll give you an example. If things get worse, yes, we will stop doing outpatient CTs and outpatient MRIs and use that space to house patients. We will stop doing our quality-based procedures, which bring a lot of funding for the hospital, and not do hips and knees that people wait two or three years for, and start using that staff and that space. We may even have to close our cold and flu clinic at Peel and use that space for inpatients. So, we do have stepwise measures that we can still take, but those are harsh measures. And at this point last week, we felt that it was better to temporarily seek help from our colleagues and our peers, as opposed to, you know, pull the trigger on those very, very harsh measures, and really put the other health of the community, all of the other diseased community, you know, make them go a step back. So, please don't be alarmed. If the cases double, we will find space for those patients. They'll just be at the expense of other services that we provide, and we're just not quite prepared to go there yet. And we want to be able to serve the community in every way. And, you know, without taking too long to answer the question, I truly believe, and I want to defend our community, and I want to defend our mayors, and I want to defend Lawrence, because everybody is, are doing, everybody's doing things for the right reasons. You know, I still practice once a week, and I will get people to the office and say, or call into the office virtually and say, I have a headache, I have a fever, I have a cough, doctor, can you prescribe an antibiotic? And I'll tell them, no, hold on, your symptoms are very similar to COVID symptoms, go to Peel and get tested, isolate yourself at home, and then we will see when your results come back, if you just have the flu or influenza or something else. And the first thing they tell me is that, doc, listen, I got to go to work, I got to pay my rent. And I really feel for our community because our community is, are very hardworking folks. It's not what people are saying out there, they're not stupid people that are going out there and, you know, not following the rules. Bring masks in stores, they're doing their best to stay home, some kids are learning at home, some kids are going to school. I just think it's very difficult for our community to stay away from work or, and manage what they have to manage in life. And from the mayor's point of view, I know the mayor supports us, but at the same time, Patrick and Bonnie and Mayor Thompson and Calladen, they also need to look after the small businesses, they also need to look after the economy of the city, they need to listen to everybody. And just like that, just like all of those balancing acts, we're doing the same balancing acts in the hospital, and hopefully, we don't have to go to a point where, come December, you know, we're all sitting at home and nothing is open, and that could be, that would be very disastrous, not only for the economy, but also for the spirit of our community. And that's why I really appreciated the fact that we made this move now, so that hopefully we can have a Christmas that, if, you know, that is at least fifty to seventy-five percent of what we're used to having. And I think we need to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Dr. Mohammed, that you're absolutely right, and I'm always impressed with how, you know, vigilant our residents are with trying to make sure that they are staying socially distant and only going out for essential needs, and doing their best to keep themselves safe, but also mentally healthy. You're absolutely right. And so I guess that leads me into my next question and last question. You know, I think what I don't want to see, and what I'm concerned with, and what I've heard as well, is there's the conflicting messages, right? And some people are saying, well, you know, we were in a strong lockdown before, we're not now, so it must not be that bad, but then we're being told we should stay in our bubble, in our family home only, but then we can still go to the gym. And so people are, it's almost like a let's call the whole thing off kind of reaction. And I know, and I don't want to see that happen, and I keep telling people, you know, you have to just keep yourself safe. So, I think, I think it's the communications, and how can you help support or get the message out that we took this strong approach in April, March and April, because we didn't know what we were faced with. Now we do, so this is why we are going this way. So then that way, people are just a little bit more clear and not being confused and saying, well, you know what, screw it, I'm just going to go out and, you know, hang out and see my friends and do this and that, right? So, I'm just wondering if there's some communication strategies that we can get support on, and anything that we can do to help get the message out there. So, that's my final question, and those are my final comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, may I, may I provide some comments?
Yes, please.
So, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Williams. I want to make, I'll make no bones about it, we are in a critical situation. But the difference is, and perhaps this is the analogy that I should use, in March and April, we entered prohibition, we banned alcohol, and we were like, that's it, no alcohol, no bars, nothing, nothing's open, you can't get alcohol anywhere. What we have now is a situation where we're asking people to drink responsibly. And we all know that that doesn't always happen all the time, we know that people always, you know, make different choices here and there, we know that certainly alcohol use has increased in the pandemic. But that's the essential difference, because we do recognize that the lockdown, as it happened, and we may, we may yet get there, if we don't, if we don't get, if we don't turn this around, we may yet get there, right? But it's about taking, you know, the choices that we make matter at this point in time. So, when we say, when we, basically, the lockdowns that we used in March and April, we directed a curtailment of everyone's interactions, we shut everything down, there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to actually do stuff. Now we're saying, right now, your choices matter, your role and your goal is to try to minimize your interactions as much as possible. So, yes, if you want to exercise, exercise, but do it on your own, and make sure you're adhering to precautions. If you want to go to a restaurant, you know, if you have to go to a restaurant, I would say postpone at this point in time, I haven't eaten at a restaurant indoors since March. But if you feel like you need to go, then go on your own, or with someone who is already in your immediate household, your close contacts, don't go with your six buddies from poker night, don't go with all these other people that you usually hang out with. It's the household mixing, it's the crossing of relationships. This virus, as with every other virus and pathogen, adapts to human behavior, that's why we've got foodborne illnesses, that's why we've got sexually transmitted infections, that's why we've got something like this, which spreads through respiratory droplets from person to person. So, at this point in time, we're saying, you know what, there are still some things that you can engage in, to be, you know, recognizing that mental health is important, recognizing that people need to, you know, there needs to be some element of essentials that go on in terms of work and school, et cetera, and everyone works in a different sector, or whatever the case might be. And so essentially, we're saying, we're not banning it, but we're asking you to be responsible. Because the reality is that if we're not seeing a certain level of responsibility, if the cases do get then to the next level, and we're then seeing the hospital fully into canceling all sorts of things, surging, all this other stuff, that's when we're going to have to say, you know what, the balance has tipped so far over to the COVID side that it's either we shut it down, or we shut everything down, or we basically let it loose. And countries have gotten to that point before, Western Europe got to that point, and they chose to shut it all down, the United States got to that point, and they've pretty much just decided to say, we're going to let it ride. We're not there yet, we are still in, we are still in this very narrow window where we have the ability to make choices. And so, we are appealing to the very fundamental nature of everyone in our community, to make the right choices just for the next one to two weeks. And if it starts to look like it's going away, then our situation, our situation will have changed appreciably, and my recommendations will have to move to a tighter and more significant tack.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe, that's a perfect analogy, actually. Move responsibly. That might need to be the slogan, move responsibly. No, thank you so much. This has been a really great opportunity for questions to be asked and answers to be given. And so, thank you, Mayor Brown, for calling the special meeting, I think it's going to be very helpful for our residents. And Dr. Lowe, Dr. Mohammed, stay healthy because we need you to the end. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Next question is from councillor Bowman.
Thank you very much through you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Mohammed, thank you, Dr. Lowe, for being with us tonight. I do have a couple of questions. The Peel Public Health site, when residents go on there, and I was on there prior to this meeting tonight, the numbers that are on that do not match the numbers from the Ontario epidemiology site. Why is that?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bowman, at this time, numbers are not being reported in real time. This is a functionality that we are hoping will eventually come with the launch of the new provincial system. So, the discrepancy that you're seeing is based on when the data was pulled. The provincial numbers are pulled from, so if, say it's today, for example, November eleventh, the numbers for the province reflect the numbers from 3:00 PM on November ninth till 3:00 PM on November tenth. And that's when they pull their numbers, those are the numbers they pull across the province. At Peel Public Health, because we believe that most people think that a day is usually more morning to morning, our numbers are pulled from 8:00 AM the day before till 8:00 AM the day of. So, basically, our numbers are more up to date, our numbers are basically from yesterday morning until this morning, and then they're updated at noon every day. So, the province does have a disclaimer, it makes very clear, similar to gas stations, if there's a discrepancy between the pump and the kiosk, then the pump is correct. And so similarly, if there's a discrepancy between the province's numbers, so a great example, I reported on our numbers of four hundred and fifty-eight during my press availability in Mississauga yesterday, and that was essentially what showed up, you know, with the additional cases that got added during the cleaning period on the province's dashboard today. So, our numbers are up to date, our numbers are from 8:00 AM the day before until 8:00 AM today, whereas theirs are from 3:00 PM two days before until 3:00 PM yesterday.
Okay, because I think if we can get one system that shows one number, I think everybody's going to be a little bit more understanding of exactly where we are in the system, because I think there's a lot of people out there, including myself, that are getting COVID fatigue, to tell you the truth. And, you know, if we see numbers from Ontario, then we see numbers from the LYNs, then we see numbers from Peel Public Health, and none of them are the same, it brings up a question, who do we, who do we listen to? Who has the right numbers? So, if we can get those fixed up as soon as we can, that's going to be a big help, I think. The other question I had was, there was charts at one time on the social determinants of health, race, and occupation, and I believe the latest one we got on there is from August seventh. Was there any data processed after August seventh?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'll just respond to the previous comment, the LYN doesn't issue any numbers, they're basically Peel or the province. We had contemplated moving to the province's system to report 3:00 PM to 3:00 PM, but we thought that it would be a disservice to our residents because that's not reflecting what is normally understood as a 24-hour period from a morning to a morning. And obviously, the province is pulling it on the basis of 34 health units, so they're not going to change their reporting for one system. So, I am hopeful that the real-time reporting will eventually come in and just sort this out altogether. And then in respect to the age and occupation, race and occupation report, I'm happy to report that today, our dashboard actually started updating workplace outbreaks in line with regional council direction that was received previously, again, obviously with the caveats around public disclosure, that was communicated to regional council this afternoon. And later on this week, we will be adding another tab that will include a monthly update of race and occupation data from the cases that we've received in updating the report from August.
Oh, perfect, okay. And, Dr. Mohammed, this is for you. There, since March, April, May, June, the city of Brampton has been taking an approach, let's educate people, let's talk to people, let's make them understand. To me, that time is over. If people don't know what we're in now, and if they don't understand what the actions, their inactions are going to cause for this city and for the region, as Dr. Lowe had mentioned, by Christmas or by January, I just don't understand, like, where we're going with this. And I know that hospital overcrowding could be a big issue, but is there anything from the communications side that Ausler can put out that basically says what you've told us tonight, that, you know, if things don't improve, we're in for some difficulty? I know the city of Brampton does a lot of correspondence and email activity and social media. What's the hospital doing to let people know the situation we're in?
Well, first of all, thank you for your question. I'm not completely sure if it's the hospital's role to enforce that, but it is part of our role to inform the community as to, you know, what are the right things to do in terms of health promotion and safety. I don't think, I have been in the media more than I have been in the last six to seven days. And each time, whether I've been in the Globe and Mail, or Global, or CP24, or CBC, or Punjabi media, they always end by, is there something else you'd like to say? And I say exactly what you're saying, is, which is, the time for taking this lightly has gone. You know, we talked, we started by getting the message out for Thanksgiving, I've put tweets out, my comms team has put things out on Instagram, we went to then talking about Halloween, and now I'm pushing the Diwali action. But I think it would not be a bad idea for Peel Public Health and the city and the hospital, perhaps, to have one joint message out there, whether it's through, you know, I would leave it to my comms team to figure out what is the best way to do it. But if that's what we need, then we'd be happy to participate in that. Apart from that, we really are trying on an ongoing basis, not only like, you know, I know Mayor Brown invites us to his press conferences, and, you know, we're part of the city of Brampton Town Hall, we're actually now planning for an Ausler Town Hall, telephone Town Hall, that we would be holding in the near future, that will not only be for the Brampton community, but also for the Etobicoke community, or just this, just this reason is to get the word out. So, I understand what you're saying. When I was making my comments to councillor Williams's question about what our population is facing, you know, that was my outside nice guy voice, but sometimes I do sit there at home in a quiet moment and think exactly what you're thinking, which is, you know, what's going to get through to some people? And when I say some people, I'm And when I say some people, I'm thinking about the people that may be at weddings or the people that may be at a backyard party. You know, I live in Brampton. I live on a street that has a number of parks, number of basketball courts. It's very close to Algarado Park. And when I'm driving back home and if it's still light out, sometimes I cringe. Because even though people, they may not be partying, but the number of people that are out there and playing in the playgrounds or driving down to Algarado Park, it's still way more than I would like to see. And I think that's all playing a part here. But to answer your question, we'd be happy to, to work with the city and work with Lawrence's team and the region appeal to put out a joint statement or a joint information sort of bulletin to help everybody understand. Honestly, I really think that everybody knows what to do. And I think there's, there may be less than one person, the percent of the people that are ignoring it just because they want to ignore it. I don't think we have this freedom and I don't want to wear a mask because it's my right and freedom issue here. But I think there are people that are continuing to do some activities because, out of necessity. Now, Lawrence said it very well. Being a person of South Asian descent, if somebody's going to invite me to their wedding and they're going to tell me that there's only going to be 50 people there, I'm not going to go. But I know a more traditional person, which is a lot of the people that live in our community, they will go because not going would be a significant insult to the family that invited you. And I think that's where, that's the slippery slope that our community, especially our diverse community falls into, where they go to hold up the principles of their culture and they end up at a wedding where they may be completely fine, but somebody else is not. And then that's where the domino effect starts. You know, we have a, we have a family of 10 that has patients at Ausler. They have three loved ones at Ausler. Seven of them are isolated at home. And of the three loved ones, two are now in the ICU and the third one may end up in the ICU either last night or today. And unfortunately, when you try to do something to ensure that you're carrying on the values of your culture or of your family, it has these catastrophic effects where 10 members of the family are ill, three are in the hospital and two of those three are less than 40 years old. And they may be on a ventilator as of right now. And it's really sad. It's really concerning. But to answer your question, I will work and our teams will work with the city and with Peel Public Health or the region appeal together. If we need to put something out, we'll put it out even more than what we're already doing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mohammed. And that story you just told is a story that everybody needs to hear. And, and so if you can communicate that story, I think that if you look at the numbers, Dr. Lowe, you're very familiar with the numbers. The, the age group, the cohort 20 to 29 has, has virtually always been the number one group ranging anywhere from 14% of the total. I've seen it as high as 24, 25% of the total. I believe yesterday alone, there was 41 people in that age group that were infected. And you know what? I agree with what people are saying, but I also agree with Dr. Mohammed. Some days I just sit here and shake my head and say, do these young people who continue to gather in parking lots, who continue to gather on soccer fields, do they not understand that they're taking this home? And, and when we talk about the media coverage, when we talk about the papers, when we talk about CP24, when we talk about the Toronto Star, that is not the media that the 20 to 29-year-olds are listening to or, or active in. So, you know, if we can change that somehow and start driving that message home, I think we just need to get a bigger stick. But now that, you know, it's going to be very hard to charge people. I think you're still going to have those people out there who just say, to heck with it. I don't care. I'm just going to go ahead. So we've got a very long haul ahead of us and I thank you guys for doing what you're doing. Thanks.
Oh, I believe we're like at a point in here too?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to Councillor Bowman. I wanted to add to Dr. Mohammed's, you know, very impassioned perspective and certainly the challenges with social gatherings, weddings, those are all understood and what I put forward in my letter of instruction. And I would also agree with Councillor Bowman that certainly for a certain segment of the population, you do have to really wonder. I mean, we're now at the end of 2020. You'd think they'd know what the theme of this year is at this point in time. And it's, you know, like I said, it's, it's no surprise what we need to do in terms of limiting our interactions as much as possible to our close contacts at home and also essential in-person meetups outside of the home. But I want to really drive home and underline one other point, which is there are many different, there are many different areas that we need to target in our fight against COVID-19. And certainly the enforcement around social gatherings is one piece. But Brampton's story is also ultimately a story of disparity. And we do know that there are many people here, often new Canadians, who are working in workplaces where employers are not taking precautions. They're not putting in place, you know, measures for these individuals to distance, to cohort, to have personal protective equipment at work. We know that these individuals are precariously employed so that they're, they choose not to get tested because they know that they won't be, that they'll lose, you know, a certain number of days of work. They won't be able to make rent. We know that people who do fall sick with COVID-19, they can't isolate because they live with 10 or 12 other people. And then those 10 or 12 other people are also at risk. So I very much welcome the Federal Isolation Centre because I think that will help with the household transmission problems that we have here. And I can't underscore enough how much challenge that we have in the workplaces in terms of really trying to get, you know, I think there are a lot of, and don't get me wrong, there's a lot of employers out there that are playing by the rules. They're doing the right thing. But there are other employers out there who, you know, we see outbreaks because they didn't think it would happen to them or they didn't think that it was something to be taken seriously. And that's ultimately putting their employees and their community and our entire economy, really, if you're a business trying to cut corners, at risk. And so I really want to drive home the point between, I mean, basically the point that every one of us has a minimum amount of interaction that we have to do in person. To the extent that some people have interactions in person that they have no choice over by virtue of their job or by virtue of their living situation, their employment conditions, we need to put in place protections to help those people. Paid sick days, other worker protections, workplace blitzes that we're working on with the Ministry of Labor. We know what the high-risk workplaces are. It's the places that people can't mail it in from. They got to be in there in person. That also needs to be a critical part of our strategy. It's a critical continuing part of our strategy. And the enforcement there is to the employers to make sure that they're taking care of their staff and their community. But I also agree that with the social gatherings, it is the communication outreach, it's the cultural communication outreach. And to some extent, it's going to have to be the enforcement that really drives home. There is no reason to be celebrating. I mean, you could celebrate, but I think Dr. David Williams said it best at a press conference where he said, celebrate but don't congregate. So basically show up, you can, you know, show up on Zoom. I've been to so many Zoom parties this year and I enjoy my parties. I got to tell you all this right now. I guarantee you some of those 20 or 29-year-olds in Brampton, I could give them a run for their money. But the thing is, we just need them to just stop meeting in person. There's other ways to socialize. We live in an era, in 1918, there was no Zoom during the Spanish Flu. We're so fortunate that we can actually see, you know, some sort of a reflection or an image of our people. So just for the next two to four weeks to get this thing under control, limit your interactions outside your household with precautions to the most essential reasons. If you have to go into work, you have to go into work. But for everything else, weddings, et cetera, ask yourself, do you have to go? And for the stuff that you're going in for, make sure that your employer is taking precautions. We know it's tough. We're going to, we're going to work on that. But it's a matter of trying to reduce the contacts that people have to do and reduce the risk there. And then for everyone else, the discretionary stuff, that's on us. That's on us to, to each make the right choice as we go forward. So I just wanted to add that perspective, that there are a lot of people just due to disparities who are forced to and who, who bear a greater, a greater potential risk just by virtue of their work or where they live.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe. Our next question is from Councillor Santos.
Thanks so much and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Dr. Lowe and my council colleagues. You've answered a lot of my questions already. I do have two final things to ask. And you had mentioned earlier that we require targeted restrictions, a targeted approach, and I would add targeted communications. I think that with all due respect, it's great that we're having this special council meeting. But a special shout out to our fan club watching out there at 8:45 at night, this special council meeting. I actually don't think that the people who are listening right now are necessarily the people who should be getting the message of what we're talking about tonight. So I think what is most important is how we're going to get this particular message out into the community and as quickly as possible, especially before Diwali this weekend. I think we have to be very aggressive in getting the message out of what we're talking about before this weekend. But as Councillor Bowman had mentioned as well, also to our young people, how, how are we going to reach out to the young people so that we can change some of that behavior? So I guess, Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed, I think one of the things, and I know we're going to regional council tomorrow to discuss this as well, but considering a lot of the cases are gender, are being, are happening here in Brampton, how are we going to target our communications from Peel Public Health into Brampton? Whether that's more communications resources dedicated from Peel Public Health to target some of our hotspots in Brampton or what that might look like? And then I guess a question for our city staff as well. How can we as a city, on our city side, do a similar thing so that we are sharing this common message as quickly as possible after this meeting to the people that are going to be impacted the most? And then my final piece here, because I always like taking action steps after meetings, is whether or not we should consider passing a motion this evening to endorse all of the recommendations that Dr. Lowe has put forward tonight.
So go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Apologies.
Yeah, I think we do have a motion drafted, Councillor Santos will put on the screen after. But I think having a motion supporting Dr. Lowe's recommendations will be consistent, especially since we're going to have Brampton representatives at regional council tomorrow and we can mention that Brampton council supported it at our council meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering about just the communications piece because I think, Dr. Lowe, I think that from Peel Public Health, that's going to be super important.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Santos, thank you for the question. We did put together already a number of materials, both for social as well as a PDF on how to, how to celebrate Diwali differently this year. We also have a group that I, just before this council meeting, I was conversing with that are going to be putting together, together with other community, members of the Peel Region Community Response Table to really get the word out to families and especially to Manders and Temples. Just the idea that this is not a time to be having large gatherings and large celebrations. And I'll say that here in open council as well. Again, the recommendation is virtual services as much as possible. And also sticking in close contact with the immediate households. So we're going to be relying on cultural organizations in this, in Brampton as well as throughout the region. We're going to be relying and reaching out to various social media influencers, trying to, trying to get them on board. And I understand that a full strategy was already in the works and will be finalized and rolled out as of tomorrow. But to your other question, Councillor Santos, you had asked about communications resources. As you, as you're, you may be aware, tomorrow I'm bringing forward a report around the staffing strategy for the COVID-19 pandemic. And embedded within the staffing strategy includes a, I think, a lengthy, a two-year length contract for a communications associate to shore up our communications work right now. All of our communications support at the region appeal and Peel Public Health has been, as all of, all on city council and Mayor Brown can, can certainly imagine aware and imagine, has been completely saturated with just the extent and the interest in this topic. And so that is one of the asks that is covered in the report that is coming before regional council tomorrow as well. But all that to say, in terms of Diwali specifically, there is a multi-pronged strategy that is, that was already launched with the social and, and the PDF brochure about how to celebrate. That happened earlier this week and we will be augmenting that message tomorrow with additional prongs of the strategy as through the community groups and social media influencers as identified this evening.
Thanks, Dr. Lowe. And I think as, as the weekend approaches and folks are speaking to media, I think the message should be hard-hitting and like a strong request for folks not to be gathering over the weekend. Thanks a lot. And then, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned there's a motion?
Yeah, since you're the last speaker, we can put the motion on the screen now. The first motion moved by Councillor Santos, second by Councillor Singh. The Brampton City Council supported endorsed enhanced public health measures in Peel Region issued under Ontario Regulation 26320 dated November 8, 2020 by Dr. Lawrence Lowe, Regional Peel Medical Officer of Health. That's the first motion. And the second motion is about communications. So I guess we can all do it as one motion, right? And the staff be requested, I go down. And the staff be requested to conduct an aggressive campaign asking residents not to gather for Diwali due to COVID-19 as directed by the enhanced public health measures issued by the Peel Medical Officer of Health.
Mr. Mayor, it's the councillor Dylan. May I speak?
Yes.
Sorry, if you can, if the clerk can just scroll down to the motion regarding Diwali. So it says that staff be requested to conduct an aggressive campaign asking residents not to gather for Diwali. And I agree with that. The pandemic's going to be going forward for, I would suspect, a few weeks to a few months. I don't want this particular motion to be calling out one particular community. We've had a number of different celebrations in the past couple of weeks, few weeks. We're going to be having Christmas as well. We can definitely use the word Diwali, but I think not to offend anybody. We could use Diwali in perhaps any other celebrations going forward as long as COVID is still around. And so the reason is because I think we don't want to single out a particular group. So if we can, it's possible to reword that.
Councillor Dylan, since Dr. Lowe has talked about his concern for Diwali, are you suggesting we add a Christmas into, to the motion? We're not necessarily, hopefully, I imagine we're still going to be in the same situation at Christmas, but I don't think we've officially heard that from, from Dr. Lowe yet.
Right. And, you know, if we're going to, I'm not sure when he does. But will we be doing this for every celebration, for every, every religious or cultural celebration? You know, going forward at Christmas, will we say we're going to conduct an aggressive campaign asking residents not to gather for Diwali? Or sorry, for Christmas, will we be saying that?
Yeah, I certainly think after hearing what Dr. Lowe said about Thanksgiving and Halloween, that we should for all, all functions, if, if we were asking people not to gather for Remembrance Day, we're asking, we're asking the committee not to gather for Halloween. I would say any event that would cause people to gather in large numbers, we should be particularly mindful of. And so maybe take the word out aggressive and just, just for staff to do everything they can, working with Peel Public Health to get the message out that we don't want another spike. We have to be extra diligent.
And I understand that, but I'm just not comfortable with the wording, and if we take the word aggressive out, I'm fine with that, too, and I prefer that. But the question I have is, if we are still continuing on this trend, Christmas, will we be having another special meeting for Christmas? In, in asking residents not to gather for Christmas? That's my question.
Well, the special meeting wasn't because of Diwali, Counselor Dillon.
No, I understand that, but there's a motion here that says aggressive campaign asking residents not to gather for Diwali.
So when the Medical Officer of Health alerted us his concerns about Halloween, we took them to heart and we aggressively communicated them. He's raised the concern about Diwali, and I know at last week's press conference, myself and Counselor Singh echoed the concerns of public health, and I know that we would do the same if we're still in this situation, which I suspect we will be, when it comes to Hanukkah and Christmas and New Years, because I imagine those would all be times when we can have people gathering in larger numbers.
But do you, the question, and not to belabor the point, but do you suspect that we'll be having motions for those in those specific holidays coming up?
Okay, so Dr. Lowe?
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counselor Dillon, for raising this concern. I would highlight that the measures that are outlined in the Enhanced Public Health Measures issued letter of instruction that was issued under Oreg 26320 specifies that these measures are going to be reviewed on a 14-day cycle, so every two weeks we'll be looking at things. So while it is too early to refer to any other holiday at this point in time, my suggestion, if I may, to Mayor and City Council, is if the temporal nature of the, of the motion here is, is what is being debated, perhaps you could say not to gather for Diwali this weekend, or any other celebrations in the future as may be identified due to COVID-19, such that it speaks to the fact that at the time of the motion, Diwali was coming up in the weekend, and that was the specific identifying piece that you wanted to highlight, not to highlight from a perspective of the cultural perspective, but a perspective of just it's happening this weekend, and then really also still leaving the door open for all the other cultures and large celebrations that may come in the future. So that's just a, a potential amendment that I would propose with an understanding, of course, that we will be revising these measures every two weeks. And certainly, Christmas, if we get things under control, I'm hopeful that Christmas is still in play, but in the event not, then I would also, I mean, we will have an aggressive campaign or any sort of campaign against Christmas if we're still in the same picture when December 25th rolls around. So I just wanted to offer that as a potential clarification and, and certainly leave it to Council, obviously, to determine the final disposition of the wording.
Right, and I think this is more, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think this is, I'm more comfortable with this amendment now. I think it's, it clearly identifies that obviously Diwali is coming up, but it also includes any other celebrations in the future that may be identified, so I'm good with this.
Okay, and I see, I guess we should add in Bondi Chord Divas as well with, with Diwali.
Yeah, that's, that's correct as well.
Diwali and Bondi Chord Divas, which is.
That's correct.
Yeah. I see Counselor Santos has an idea for changing the wording.
Thank you so much, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I did ask a question in my, in my comments earlier about whether or not is a communications campaign with respect to the upcoming weekend on behalf of the city? So perhaps staff can clarify, and if, if there is, I think then a change of wording should be that staff ensure that a campaign is conducted for communicating to residents not to gather. So if, if, if Jason Tamming is on, on the call, if you could just clarify if there is indeed an existing campaign being planned, and if, if, if the change in wording would be appropriate.
Thanks, Counselor. Jason here and through the Chair, we have a number of things actually going on with respect to communicating about Diwali. The three key messages are to gather only with your immediate household, which much of this has been in collaboration with Public Health Communications that we discuss with, bi-weekly with our team. So there's a number of things happening within ethnic media, Punjabi, Hindi, Ujraat, ethnic radio ads that are already running on a number of stations, ethnic TV ads, posters as well as social media that I've shared with Council, a number of tiles, as well as some additional ones with some stronger messaging about not gathering, and as well as the digital screens at city facilities. So there's a number of things going on, and as always, we can, with Council, or I can take away and put more funds into getting that to a broader audience, but there's definitely a strong message from the city going out to not gather, stay home if you're unwell, and to consider hosting a virtual celebration this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I see Counselor Willens has a comment here.
Yes, thank you, through, through you, Mr. Aaron, thank you, Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed, for coming on board here tonight to clarify some things, but I'm okay with the motion, the way it's been changed, but I think we, I actually strongly feel we have to leave the word aggressive in there. We can't water this down, we've seen our numbers go up and up and up, we had things under control, so we've got to be aggressive, and I think, I feel we should leave aggressive in there. So I would prefer to have that just left. The rest of the motion, I'm fine with, the changes that Counselor Dillon asked, I'm fine with that, but I think we have to leave aggressive in there, we can't water this down.
Counselor Dillon, are you okay with, with keep aggressive in, but use the other amendments from Dr. Lowe?
Sorry, I'm not comfortable with aggressive because, you know, my experience with the community is that, for example, when you're speaking about bylaw, the community, what's speaking, you want to speak specifically about South Asian community, was fearful of bylaw because there was quote-unquote "an aggressive campaign", there was against them for basement apartments, there was fear from the community as well. You know, these are communities that come from a culture of fear placed upon them by authorities. And so aggressive, I think we have to be a little bit culturally, what's the word I'm looking for, aware, you know, aggressive, whether you put it in there or not, will it, you know, if you leave it in, will you make it more aggressive? If you take it out, will it make it less aggressive? I don't think it makes a difference, but I think what we need to do is word it in an appropriate.
Instead of arguing over wording, how about a solution here? How about just a concerted campaign, which shows that we're being focused on this, a concerted campaign? I think that alleviates Counselor Dillon's concern and Counselor Willens' concern, rather than us wordsmithing, spending time arguing over a word when we all want the same thing here. Does that work? Seeing no objection.
If I can just finish my point, Mayor Brown, I think we have to be, we can leave concerted in there. Aggressive, in my opinion, was not appropriate, and I think we have to be respectful of the community as well and aware of some of the issues that they have had. And I do bring up a point again, that they were, felt they were targeted in some of these campaigns that we had before, and so definitely, I don't agree with the aggressive. If you guys want to consider it in there, then, then, you know, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dillon. I think we are everyone on the same page now. Counselor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I want to say is, when you're talking in terms of communications and marketing, an aggressive campaign does not mean one that is intended to make somebody frightened. It, it, an aggressive campaign is one that is sustained, it's continuous, and it is put out in a way that everybody will understand the message. That's what aggressive means, and that's why I don't mind the word aggressive in there. Like I said when I was speaking, I'm tired of pussyfooting around with this virus that we've been doing since March. Aggressive campaign means we're going to take this seriously, and we're going to continue to do it and continue to do it and continue to do it until people understand what we're asking. And that's what aggressive is, it's not a word that's meant to offend anybody. Thanks.
Actually, I think I got a better solution. The word recommended by Dr. Lowe, we like to take his advice, is comprehensive. So the staff, the staff ensure a comprehensive campaign is conducted. I'm going to take the liberty of saying, let's trust Dr. Lowe's wording. And save any further discussion on word synonyms for a future Scrabble game. On that note, I see there's no other speakers, we have the motion before us, if we could have a recorded vote?
Members of Council, a recorded vote has been requested on the motion on the screen. All in favor, please indicate. Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Visante?
Yes.
Counselor Willens?
Yeah, the mayor didn't ask me if I was through speaking, because I think I had the floor, but yeah, I'm good with the changes, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paleshi. I'll come back to you. Counselor Bowman?
Yes.
Counselor Maderos?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Fortini?
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor Singh?
Yes.
Counselor Dillon?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Paleshi?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 11 to 0.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed. We have a motion from Counselor Willens, seconded by Counselor Fortini, to receive the delegations. Okay, we did that with that motion, I'll get ready to do it again, okay? So thank you, Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed, for your time tonight, you know, these are two of the busiest people in Peel Region, and the fact they spent two hours with us highlighting how severe the situation is, let's, let's just think about that in itself, that they would take the time because they know that through City Council, through each of your wards, you can communicate what they've told you tonight to your residents. And thank you for sacrificing your precious time, Dr. Lowe and Dr. Mohammed. Our next item is 5.1, we actually, there's no COVID update, so this takes us to public question period, are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, there are not.
That takes us to confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Willens, seconded by Counselor Fortini, to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing none, the motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. I have a motion moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Paleshi, to adjourn today's meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing none, the motion carries. Stay safe, stay healthy. Thank you to Peter Faye for coming in on a Wednesday night when he hadn't intended to. Thank you, all of you, for your indulgence this evening. I thought this was very informative and we had an important discussion on COVID-19. Until then, until our next meeting, stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, members of Council, this meeting is now adjourned, we are just going to wait for the.